6:15. Ms. Dave, are you ready? Okay. So with that, I will call the study session to order. Happy May 19th, 2015. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Atkins.
Here. We don't have any special orders of the day for this agenda. Are there any public comments on things that aren't on the study session agenda? Because we'll have plenty of discussion about the P-Bid.
Are we going to have a chance to comment after?
Oh, yes. Yeah, Joyce, yeah, we'll, we'll, you'll have a chance to talk after the staff presentation.
I'd rather speak after.
Okay, all right. So without further ado, Karen, are you taking the lead on this?
Yes, I am.
All right.
I'm timestamping it so I can run over there. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and for those of you in the audience, both here and on TV. So today is a study session on the proposed citywide property-based business improvement district for the Emery-Garand shuttle. And so this presentation is maybe 10, 15 minutes max. And so if there are any questions after that, perhaps unless it's a clarification question, we can, your question might be covered in the presentation. So most of you have seen this slide before, is what is a citywide property-based business improvement district? It's a special assessment district with a levy determined by the special benefit received by the assessed property owners. It is assessed annually and collected through the county property tax rolls. It requires a Prop. 218 ballot process, which means that a ballot would be sent to every affected, potentially affected parcel owner, and then city council action to adopt. And what is put in fort, put in front of the parcel owners is a management plan, which will include everything from governance to the proposed assessment formula. It's a protest vote-by-mail ballot, and the ballots are weighted according to the proposed assessment levy. There is a public hearing before the council can take action, and the council can only take action if, in fact, the Prop. 218 ballot process is in the affirmative. And even then, the council may choose to approve or disapprove the proposed P-Bid, based upon what is heard in the public hearing or other input. So the current property-based assessment district has three land use parcels categories, which are commercial, which includes all commercial other than industrial warehouse, and then there's industrial warehouse, and then there's for rental housing. Currently, the P-Bid does not include home ownership parcels, though some condos do pay into the Emery-Garand through development agreements. The TMA board, right now, consists of the seven highest assessed and/or direct build property owners, one property owner at large elected by the membership, one direct build housing representative, and one member of the general public, which currently is the Chamber of Commerce, well, was the Chamber of Commerce representative, but that is actually a vacancy right now. The current P-Bid is for a 10-year renewal period. It sunsets after this coming fiscal year. Next year would be the last end of service under the current funding agreement. And the annual assessment is capped at 5%, but that can be cumulative. The proposed P-Bid, I want to give you a little history, and that really is that there was a lot of discussion about a year or so ago about funding strategy, both long-term for the P-Bid, as well as capital needs. The council directed staff to establish an Emery-Garand task force that was made up of various stakeholders, including representatives of the commercial, as well as residential community, and current members of the TMA. That task force made a recommendation that was really upheld by council, and that was to focus on the extension of a P-Bid for the primary funding source, but also for staff to look at alternative funding sources, both for operating as well as capital costs. And staff has been in communication with the Alameda County Transportation Commission, and it will be a competitive bid process, but we feel that we are well-positioned to be able to receive some funding for that, either for rolling stock buses and potentially for the portion of the Emery-Garand that is of general benefit or regional benefit. But those calls will start, there might be one starting this year, but it'll be over the next two years that those calls for proposals will be released, and we, staff plans to work with the TMA to go after that money as well. So the enabling legislation for the proposed P-Bid comes from two places. One is the State of California Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994, as well as City of Emeryville Ordinance Number 15003, which just took effect. And that clarifies that a P-Bid can be initiated by council, as well as by petition. It lowers the threshold of petition to 30% rather than 50%. The actual ballot process is still a protest vote of no more than, of 50%, so that's not changed. It really is the petition, since the signature is collected to initiate the P-Bid, that there was a lower threshold. And the fact, and to make it clear that residential parcels can be included in the P-Bid. Under the State of California law, certain court cases have held that any property that receives a special benefit should be assessed, but to make sure that that's clarified, that was enshrined as well in the local P-Bid. So just to summarize the proposed P-Bid. Now, some of this is a little different than what went on the packet on Thursday. There were some further discussions with the assessment engineer, and he took a, did a review of the methodology that was used. And so in addition to trips generated by parcel land use, what I will be presenting today, and what will be included in the management plan and assessment report when it's finalized, is also to consider service access, more specifically. And that is that there are some routes that have seven-day service and some routes that have five-day service. And so it can be argued that those that are receiving seven days of service are getting more special benefit than those that are getting five-day service. And so we're making that adjustment. 80% of the parcels in the city do fall as being at least a quarter of, no more than a quarter of a mile from a seven-day service route. So what it does is it really lowers those that are not part of the 80%, but, and slightly raises those the 80%. And I have a chart that will give you the comparison of the five-day versus the seven-day service. And we will be doing a parcel-by-parcel analysis, because in some cases, just to do a ratio, just to draw a radius of a quarter of a mile, you may be expecting people to cross a railroad track, you know, where in fact, it's impossible to do so. So that is going to make the determination of the parcel-by-parcel analysis a little bit more challenging than we had originally, but we are working on that. The other thing in the proposed P-Bid management plan is to clarify that annual assessments could be recalculated every year for changes in land use and/or service access. So for example, the new pedestrian bridge proposed for 53rd Street could open up five- and seven-day service access. Or, you know, there are parcels that do change land use. Or if the TMA, through, bless you, through their authority, change service in a way that warrants a recalculation. So that's going to be enshrined in the management plan. Also, all parcels, bless you, are being considered in the, for the P-Bid assessment, including residential, as well as commercial property owners.
I just have to ask a question here. I don't think we could, how can we assess parcels that are beyond a quarter-mile walk?
We're not.
From a bus?
We're not.
They're being excluded.
No, there's a distinction between those that are a quarter of a mile for a route that runs seven days a week, and a quarter of a mile of a route that runs five days a week. And so we're varying the assessment based upon whether or not you're part of the 80% of parcels that are within a quarter of a mile of a seven-day route, or the 20% of parcels that are within, that are not within a quarter of a mile of a seven-day route, but reserve, but receive five-day route service.
And what about the parcels that are more than a quarter of a mile from any stop, any, any route?
There are very few of those parcels. They will be included in the assessment district, because routes could change, but the assessment, as long as they're more than a quarter of a mile, is zero.
They will be assessed zero?
Zero. They are in the assessment district, because you want to capture them if the land use changes or the service, well, sorry, you want to capture them if the service access changes.
Okay.
For example, if there was a route that went up Adeline, for example, that would pretty much capture those few remaining houses in the northern end of the triangle. But until that happens, or, or if it doesn't happen, their assessment would be zero. Also, another issue is governance. And the proposed, the proposed management plan would maintain the TMA as the owner's representative. With the TMA board composition bylaws, something that the staff recommends, that it be very general in the management plan, because that takes kind of a vote of everyone to be able to change, but it should be, it couldn't be enshrined in the contract that the city has with the TMA for the life of the P-Bid. That provides a certain amount of review by the city to make sure that it is, in fact, equitable. And if bylaws are one, or need to be changed, it would just be kind of an amendment to that contract, as opposed to, you know, of course, would follow the bylaws and how you make those changes, but it would, it would give the city a little bit more of ability to monitor or insert itself if it became necessary. Staff is also proposing that this P-Bid be a 15-year renewal, so run a term of 15 years. The proposed P-Bid, sorry, the P-Bid ordinance that was recently adopted does allow for the city council to disestablish the P-Bid, which is a little different than under state law, that it really has to be the, the parcel owners that decide to do that, but this would provide for the city council. So for example, the E-Bot, if that regional transportation plan was enacted and there was some regional funding, you know, that might be a reason why the, the city might deestablish the P-Bid. So it allows for that. The proposed P-Bid would start in fiscal year 2015, 2016, for service year 2016. And just like now, the annual assessment would be capped at no more than 5%, but we are not, at this point, recommending a cumulative cap, that it could, you know, if you don't do it 5%, then you could raise it, you know, double that the next year, but that for the life of the P-Bid, it would not be more than 5%.
That's the, the increase.
The increase, yes, the increase. But the specific assessment would be recommended by the TMA through their process, and then be considered and essentially put on the, on the, on the property rules by the council, as is now. And I would say, over the life of both of the P-Bids to date, the annual assessment has averaged less than 3% per year. So general versus special benefit. Some, I will say that the numbers that I have, I would say are virtually correct, but we are still making a few small adjustments, and so there might be some variation. But when you see it on June 2nd, you know, then we will have made all those little tweaks if we find that we need to have some. Right now, there is a difference between, so when you look at a P-Bid, the parcels that are assessed can only be assessed based upon the special benefit that they derive. If there's anything that's considered to be general benefit, then that cannot be funded through the assessment district, and has to be funded through other ways. So this slide shows that the general benefit is going, would be about 12.81% of the total operating cost, for a cost of $462,840, pretty much dollars. And staff has already asked that council consider this as part of the mid-cycle budget review, to include that in the city budget for 1516, because that cannot be covered by the assessment district. We are in hopes that this is an area where ACTC could help out, because this is clearly part of regional benefit, it's pass-through trips and trips that cannot be assigned to any parcel. So for example, we have people who take, who might walk to the MacArthur-Bart, or get off at the MacArthur-Bart, and take the Emery-Garand to 40th and San Pablo, get on AC Transit, and go someplace else. I've actually done this once myself. I have gotten on the Emery-Garand in Berkeley and gone to MacArthur-Bart to be able to catch the airport shuttle to Oakland. So, you know, there are, you know, I don't know that's, it's not something that I think is very common, but the assessment engineer did look at those kinds of issues. I do believe that this dollar amount will actually be lower, because one of the things in our tweaking is there are those direct build parcels that are outside of Emeryville, that are not part of the assessment district, and they consist of about $120,000 worth of, of, of funding. That would potentially lower the general benefit cost, because they are being paid for, with something different than assessment dollars. So we'll have that specific number for when we come back. So the special benefit points, and this is the big picture, is essentially based upon land use times the route frequency factor. So route frequency is the five-day versus the seven-day service. Common areas and multifamily housing, roads and easements, parking lots, parking garages, or carbon areas in all buildings, roads and easements, parking lots, parking garages, gas stations, auto repair shops are excluded, because either they don't generate in themselves trips, or their use is completely automobile-based, like a gas station. So they aren't going to get a benefit from an alternative transportation source. You're not going to get on the Emery-Garand to fuel up your car. Just a map of, you can kind of see the different routes, and it's the Shell Powell Route, this is the seven-day service. And as you can see, it mostly is, a lot of it is serving the, the regional retail. So this is a big chart. I put the whole chart in for a review, but I'm just going to hit some high points. As I said, this is going to, this may end up being slightly different, but I did include what's not in your packet, and that is the difference between five-day versus seven-day service. And so just some highlights, that a single-family residential parcel, if they're on a five-day route, the proposed assessment would be slightly over $119 per parcel. This is based upon the ITE manual trip generation, in which it says that single-family households generate more trips than rental properties or multifamily properties. And if you are on a seven-day route, then that would be 100, almost $167 per parcel. General office, the proposed assessment for a five-day route is a little over $138 per 1,000 square feet. It'll be noted that the single-family, that is a per-year charge. So you would have to do the math to figure out if you're in office. And if you're on a seven-day route, that goes up to $193.41. General retail shopping, five-day route, $534.52, and seven-day route, 748.63, based on 1,000 square feet. Light industrial, range between, it would be either $87 or about $122 per 1,000 square feet. And multifamily residential, for a five-day route, is a little over $77 per year. And the seven-day route would be $108 per year. And so most house, there are very few single-family residential parcels in Emeryville, so the vast majority of residents are in multifamily, and they would be, on a five-day route, $77.38 or $108.38. And then lastly, just, you can look at the warehouse, which would be $44.05 per 1,000 square foot, and $61.69 square foot. Some of these are quite different than what the assessment is currently, which just had the three broad categories. That was also based upon trip reduction, but kind of all smashed together. More fine-grating means that there are some people who will be paying less per unit than they are now, and some will be paying more. For those parcels that are multi-use, think of the marketplace, or some of the Bay Street, where you have movie screens, retail, you know, various different types, maybe even office. The assessment engineer will be looking at each parcels and determining the mix, and then that parcel will get kind of a weighted sum of all the different uses. So we're still in the process of doing that work. But that will be done in time for your June 2nd meeting. So before, I did a slide like this, that showed kind of in broad sweeps, kind of the breakdown of who's paying for what. And about 90% of the P-Bid at that time was being paid for by the commercial industrial payees. That's now about 80%, with the residential picking up some more, with everyone now paying, as opposed to just those rental housing units that were not in exclusively residentially-zoned. This is not based on actual use, it's based upon access. But I did include in the packet the ridership survey, which I think supports a lot of, a little bit of the shift, in terms of, there is actually a correlation between access and use, which is kind of nice to see, that they do correlate to a large extent. So in terms of the governance, pretty much what's being proposed, the TMA role would essentially stay the same. It would act as the owner's representative. The role would be established by P-Bid law, the P-Bid management plan, and the TMA bylaws. The TMA would determine the shuttle service levels, with a difference that's subject to city review, and may require reassessment of parcels, and the development of an annual budget and P-Bid assessment levy recommendations. The city role is mostly the same with a couple of changes. One, which is not a change, is that P-Bid law says that the city shall contract with the owner's representative of the parcels that are being assessed, which is the TMA. However, the city will play a little bit more of a role in governance by facilitating a governance structure. We'll convene a meeting of stakeholders and work with the stakeholders to come up with a management structure and bylaws that is equitable. And staff proposes it be enshrined in the city TMA contract, for the reasons that I stated earlier. The city will now also have the role of, as the P-Bid administrator, of reviewing any proposed Emery-Garand service adjustments, to determine if the P-Bid should be reassessed based upon those service adjustments. So it's not to approve the actual service adjustments, but to review them to see if that would warrant the assessment engineer taking another look at the formula. So if there was a, you know, if all the routes became seven days, or if there was, you know, an additional route that, you know, made a difference in service to some versus others, those would all be reasons that the city would say, well, you can do that, but the P-Bid would have to be reassessed, and that feedback would be given to the TMA, and then, of course, they could always recommend that that be included in the next levy, if they want to do that. But still, overall, as really is in the P-Bid law, the bulk of decision-making is supposed to be with those that are, who are receiving the special benefit or are being assessed. So P-Bid schedule, that and green is kind of where we are now, or where we still need to go. The next council meeting would be on June 2nd, and that will be the finalized draft management plan and assessment engineer's report. And as part of that, the council would be asked to initiate the P-Bid proceedings. And so there would be resolutions to initiate those proceedings, and the next step would be to release, would be to prepare the ballots for every parcel. And the proposal is to send those out June 19th. It's a requirement, there's 45 days that parcels have to be able to participate in that ballot process. So August 4th would be when the ballots would be counted. There would then be a public hearing, assuming that that ballot process was affirmative. And then after that, the council would consider adopting the P-Bid. And the counting of the ballots, in the past, we've done that in the chamber right there, and it is open to the public, and anyone who wishes to can watch the vote take place. And we definitely had an audience last time. So assuming that all is affirmative, and the council does adopt the P-Bid, then staff would be working with our assessment engineer to get the property rolls updated to the County of Alameda by August 10th, so they could be placed on the 15, 16 property rolls. So I have two questions for the council. One is, hopefully, that you uphold staff's recommendation for the proposed P-Bid term to be 15 years, rather than the current 10, with, of course, the option to disestablish it if situation changes. And on the governance issue, staff's recommendation is to put in the management plan a very general sentence, that it shall be established on an equitable basis, and then to enshrine those details in the contract, as opposed to the management plan, giving a little bit of time for stakeholders to get together and figure out an equitable representation and decision-making process.
So, yeah, so I want to start off with a question here. Why would a two-bedroom condo with presumably the same potential number of inhabitants be assessed at a rate less than a two-bedroom, single-family house?
It's based upon access, not on use, and we really don't know how many people are actually living in any particular parcel. And I would also say is that we really looked at more fine-graining residential, but really the main difference in Emeryville is, is it a multifamily or a single family? So for example, at one point, we were looking at separating homeowner from rental, but in fact, in Emeryville, that is not as apparent as it may seem. And not only that, the ITE manual is really based on more of a suburban, this is for trip generation manual, is really based on more suburban model, which assumes that condos are like townhomes, as opposed to in inner cities, you know, a condo versus an apartment really.
So your first, your first statement was, it has to do with access? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Perhaps maybe speak, letting the engineer address these issues.
Absolutely.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tim Sufort with NBS. I know I've met a few of you here and there. So basically, yeah, as Karen mentioned, the, the assessment is based on special benefit to the property. And so what we're doing is using access to the shuttle as that proxy to determine, you know, that. You could, there are different ways to do it, but we're trying to do it in a most objective way, and so we're doing it with this trip generation. And we really don't distinguish between, frankly, a one-bedroom condo and a two-bedroom condo. You know, it's, it's per, per unit. And so the single-family typically has more inhabitants than a condo. Of course, you could have situations where a condo is, four people live in it, and a single-family home, that's somebody who lives half the year in Florida or something, you know? I mean, so there's, there's always vagaries within, within those categories, but these statistics have been used for, you know, for literally for decades, and have been vetted, and we can point to them as objective criteria. Is that too long of an answer? Short of an answer, but I hope that summarizes it.
It's just not a satisfactory answer. But you've answered it.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could go down to the point of doing surveys and seeing who lives in a place, you know, and do that every year, but that, it's cumbersome, it's difficult, and problematic.
Any other council questions?
To follow up on that, so this method of evaluating access has been over decades, potentially, of testing it. And there's been, I assume, litigation all about it, that has been resolved, because it's been shown to be objective. And so it's, it has stood the test of time. Is that what you're saying, basically?
Yeah, I mean, the ITE manual is used all over the United States. It's been the subject of, you know, probably extensive litigation with terms of like development impact fees, right, that are traffic-based and that kind of thing. It's, it's kind of the gold standard, which is why we used it. In the old days, if you will, of assessment districts, things were a little more subjective, and could be based on opinion, or, you know, best guess, that kind of thing, literally. The cases over the last decade, the court cases have said, you very clearly need to hang your hat on objective criteria that's been vetted well. And so that's why engineers' reports used to be this thick, and now they're this thick.
I would also add that our traffic impact fee historically had been based upon I would also add that our traffic impact fee historically had been based upon trip generation utilizing the ITE trip generation manual. So it is a, it's a relied upon standard in the industry of, of impact fees, certainly.
Any other questions from council? All right, so let's have public comment, you have three minutes, and just come on up and the next speaker can just stand behind the, the first speaker.
Joyce Jacobson for Admiral Drive, which is Watergate condos. First of all, I support Emery Go-Round. I use it. I use my car part of the time, I use Emery Go-Round part of the time, but that's a very valuable service to me, and a couple of years from now, it'll be even more valuable. So I support it very much, and I actually like the new plan quite a lot, and I'm willing to pay. I would like to be sure that residential homeowners, whether condos or houses, are represented on the TMA board. I know that right now, there is one position which goes vacant because of the peculiarities of the current residential properties that are eligible to have a representative. For instance, the owner of a large rental complex is apparently not very interested in what happens with the bus service in Emeryville. But now that homeowners are going to be involved, I would like to see two positions on the board specified for residents, people who actually live in Emeryville, not someplace else, who actually use the service, because we now need to have our voice. Now that we're paying for it, we need to have our voice. And I would like to know, before I vote, that we're going to have those positions. I don't want to leave it until sometime after I voted. Thank you.
Next. Hi, Ron.
Hello, hello. Sorry. Ron Freund, I live in the Western Front also. I'm going to follow up on what Joyce said, and then perhaps can ask the engineer for his input. In your report, the engineer, or the district report, it was extremely vague about management. The staff report, as Karen said, just wants something vague as well about equitably representing the various categories. I don't feel that it's a good strategy to go ahead with very vague, vague terms for the management. And I'm trying to resolve the issue between the weighting of the people that are contributing, and I guess the residents contribute. Between single-family and multi-unit, I figured 20%. Is that about come up? But in the management, there's no specification that that should be proportionate to that. Is that correct, too? The management could be a different proportion than...
Wait, the rest of the question is out, or...
No, don't, let him answer.
Let, let Ron finish, and then you could just keep saying...
Okay. My point is, how do we protect the interests of, of the new group that's now being assessed? That is, the residents. I don't think one or two representatives necessarily does that. There's no specification as to how many at this point. We have seven now, but we could have 12, we could have six, I don't know. I believe that's all up for grabs. What I'd like to suggest is that the percentage required for certain kinds of decisions, such as assessment increases and route changes, be at a higher threshold than a simple majority. And that, that be set at something like 2/3 vote for those kinds of issues, and that the proportion of seats on the management be set at around 35% for residents. Otherwise, I can't see how the business community can simply always have the decision-making capability. So it would be kind of disproportionate to the weighting, but if it's not illegal or against P-Bid requirements, I'm suggesting you look at something along those lines to protect interests of residents. The second question, or I have two more points, I'll be quick. I'm not clear on what the city can do during the term of the P-Bid, other than disestablish it, and even that isn't clear to me when I look at the engineer report and I look at the staff report. The staff report says the city can disestablishment at any time. Last thing, quickly, I'd like to suggest that there be some kind of a senior exemption, since it is a property tax-based district. Thank you.
Judy Timmel, resident for 22 years, living in Cohousing. We have discussed this at our meetings. We have 12 units involved. And so we are very concerned that, and would strongly prefer that this be a public transportation service. But on the other hand, we don't want to jeopardize the Emery Go-Round either. And so we would, we would like to say that if that is not possible, our primary concern would be one of representation, as the other two speakers have said, for the residents. The current representation structure isn't sufficient for this new plan. It needs to be commensurate ideally with usage, and I believe the last time we, we were here, usage of residents was estimated at over 30%. Even though we will be paying 21%, the usage would be 32%. So I think we need to establish that before we start voting. And I'm also uncomfortable that the city is in such a weak position with regard to the management of the P-Bid. I don't know if there's anything that you can do about that, but you are our elected representatives of the citizens, and yet you can't do anything about establishing schedules or, I don't know, what else, rates, routes, et cetera. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Stuart Flashman, I'm attorney representing the Emeryville Property Owners Association. And I have several comments and one question. One of the comments has to do with the, the way the assessments are being done by different categories, and which I think is a good idea, making it more fine-grained, I think probably makes it considerably fairer. I'm a little concerned about the use of the ITE as the mechanism for determining access. As was mentioned, the ITE is primarily based on suburban development and suburban, it assumes a suburban type of development. Emeryville is not really a very suburban type, it's more urban than the typical suburban city. I think there needs to be some validation of those figures by at least for looking at a couple of categories and checking to make sure that the rates that the ITE gives are similar at least to the rates that Emeryville has. Otherwise, you're not really showing proportionality, and I would suggest your assessments may be vulnerable. Second question, second comment has to do with the governance. I think I agree with, we agree with the comments that have been made about it more than just being, you know, generality, there needs to be some proportionality in the governance. You've made the assessments more fine-grained, perhaps the governance also needs to be more fine-grained with categories of, of representation for different categories of assessment. Also, I think the idea of a supermajority for some types of changes is a good idea. We have it in the state with Prop 13 and other types of, of measures, of bond measures. It, it makes some sense when you have some people with excess, perhaps an excess voting power. The last comment I would make is actually is a question, is I'm wondering about the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, which is partly in Emeryville and partly in Oakland, and how is that being handled in terms of the assessment district?
Any other public comments?
I'm Don Bonney, I live on Adeline Street. My question is, other than administrative ease, why does the entire burden fall on property owners, and none of the burden falls on the people who actually use the service? I've lived here 15 years, I've never ridden it. I walk everywhere, or I drive, but I don't use Emery Go-Round, and yet I'm going to be paying over $100 a year for it.
So? I had a couple of comments. I think for years, we have been neglecting trying to get money from the sales tax, and I think we should make a major focus on getting money from the sales tax, as well as state cap and trade money. I was at a workshop yesterday, and for state cap and trade, the maximum amount of money that any jurisdiction in California can receive is only $15 million. So that really opens the door to Emeryville getting money for affordable housing, and to the Emery, Emery Go-Round if it's public transit. Nobody was there for the workshop in Emeryville, and I think that's significant. The question of fairness here, you're about to assess residents that don't know anything about this. I talk to people at 1500 Park, and say, you're going to be assessed, they don't know anything about it. I mean, this report wasn't even available till yesterday. I mean, that's not much time to take a look at all the details of it. The governance is definitely need to be changed. I would suggest a seven-member board with two seats for residents. You know, for years, the assessments haven't been fair, and then you complain that nobody does anything about it. Is the express bus service at Watergate Towers, is that a special benefit? Should everybody in the city be paying for that? Is there any kind of a plan, are we going to have the Emeryville, Emery Go-Round go throughout the city? We don't have a plan. There's no service policy. They can stop and start service whenever they feel like it. And I don't think that's a good idea. I actually think the planning commission should review changes so that they get involved in the grant use. See, and that's another thing with cap and trade, if you took a project like Sherwin-Williams and you went there for a benefit, a grant, you could get affordable housing, and if you're sure that there's transit service, you might be able to reduce the parking requirement and make that development a little bit more affordable. And I think somebody should be stationed to try to get grant money all the time. That hasn't been happening, I think that's important.
Good evening, council members, mayor. I'm Jeff Sears of Wairiham Development. I've been on the board of the Emery Go-Round for over 15 years. I'm currently the president, and I've heard a lot of good comments, I'm not going to repeat. I will say, I think the board has been success, first of all, I think almost everyone agrees the Emery Go-Round successful should continue, I certainly do. Second, I think one of the key things that has made it able to be successful is people are looking at the big picture and not trying to micromanage. We hire a very reputable general manager that makes a lot of the operating changes. So I don't think our board has found that we want to micromanage routes and all those sort of details, and I would discourage a plan that causes more micromanagement, because to some degree, you can't measure, are you taking the bus today, and are you taking the bus tomorrow? Everyone has to say it's a good public benefit, we get enough value that we contribute. So that's what I would say about that. I like the more fine-graining of uses, but they are, some of them curious, and may, maybe could use a little refinement. They do seem suburban in some nature and different from Emeryville's characterization. Restaurants have a very, very high burden. Now, restaurants that have big parking fields and draw from a regional area, that would make sense. But many, many of our little mom-and-pop restaurants that don't have any parking, that basically are tiny little shops on the street, this is a burden on top of the minimum wage that should be considered, I think. There's some other curious things, like there's a furniture store category, and there's a home furnishing superstore category, and it's four times as much as the furniture store. And I don't know who's going to decide what's a furniture store and what's a home furnishing superstore. So some of those things, you just want to be able to administer the program without having a whole team of people that's on city staff trying to do it. So fine-grained is good, just make it manageable would be my recommendation. I think the board would welcome more participation by residential representatives. We, the, the prior speaker said, we couldn't get someone to come for the residential seat. I have no question that if it's opened up to the larger number of payers that are being considered here, that there will be people who can actively participate in a positive way. Many of the speakers here representing residents tonight come to many of our meetings and are participating, even though not official members, and we welcome their participation. So I think there have been good comments, and hopefully they'll help you steer to the next step.
Any other public comment? Okay, I noticed the engineer was wanting to answer some prior...
Mr. Carpeau.
Oh, come on up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Emery Go-Round is perfect, as far as I'm concerned, but I don't think they follow the, the steps of the AC Transit, because AC Transit come up with always this new thing about being greener. And Emery Go-Round, we have lots of buses that really smokes a lot. We really don't operate that on a green basis, and there is no electric, no solar panel, nothing like that. Then the other question I have with Emery Go-Round is that, we talk about it, but we don't have any service that goes from Emeryville to the West Oakland Bar Station. And that's really a waste, because anybody who goes to the West Bar Station there can save between 15 to 20 minutes in a ride, and not only that, the connection goes directly to Fremont and so forth. And also, the third point I want to bring here is a question of sanitation. We have all the garbage cans here that really need to be washed once in a while, and this is because people who have just dumped their stuff there in someone else's garbage can, and the neighbor, for instance, they get really uptight about it, because they're not there to police who dump stuff in their garbage can, and it smells terrible, you know? So if you want to tell Williams to take care of their garbage can, this is there. You know, they should at least shower them once in a while. Thank you.
I didn't use all my minutes, my seconds. May I use 10 seconds, just one more thing? I think it's important from a policy standpoint, I looked on my notes.
Okay, Jeff.
There are some payers on the new list of uses that have high amounts and have been people who the current PBID bills, and they don't readily pay. And we have a challenge of being able to collect on those people, and those categories on the list are things like post office, and schools, and so forth. And so I would say, it's worth thinking about, we don't want to allocate costs that the system needs to run to people who we know won't pay or won't cause to pay. I mean, you have the ability to foreclose on someone's property if they don't pay their tax bill, but that is unlikely power that you will want to use on some of these payers. So that may be worth considering, just so that we don't allocate something to them that then they have trouble paying, and then the system needs that money and doesn't have it.
That's cool. That was actually one comment I thought about making, and then I just thought, well, everybody seems to know about it, and, but if you're, if you're including the school district and the post office, and they have fairly high amounts that they're supposed to pay, then it looks like that money is available to be used, but for years, they haven't paid at all. And so I just think that somebody needs to make a decision that either they're not going to be, the money isn't going to be collected, or there should be some acknowledgement of the fact that, that that money isn't really available, and take it out of the, don't leave it in there as though that money's going to be there to pay the, the budget. That's all. Thank you. And also, I think it's a great service, and I hope we figure out a way to keep it funded.
Besides Jeff, is there someone who wants to speak a second time?
I didn't use all my time either. Just two comments. I think we should really look seriously at the question of whether it's public or private, because that's never been satisfactorily answered. And I also don't think the P-Bid is the right funding formula for the Immery Go-Round. There are other types of assessment districts, like in Los Angeles, they're creating an assessment district for a local transit system downtown, we might want to take a look at that. Thank you.
Joyce Jacobson again, since we're all getting second chances. I want to speak and, and support what Jeff Sears said about, let's not micromanage. We have an extremely efficient public transportation system in Emery Go-Round. It's one of the best in California in terms of cost, and also as reliable a service... It's one of the best in California in terms of cost and also as reliable a service as a bus service ever is. You know, there's always a certain amount of not reliability there. We've also had excellent management on the Board from the businesses and as Jeff mentioned, they have hired very capable, well-informed, experienced people to run this system. So, including having somebody right now who has access to money or knows the roots to money at Alameda County Transportation Commission. So, let's not mess with that. We've got a good thing going and I think the management structure overall should be kept in place except to have more resident voices.
Okay, so at this point I'll close. Public comment, we will have some council discussion. I wanted to offer the engineer an opportunity to respond to some of the questions because it sounded like you wanted to.
I can just make a couple of general comments.
Okay. Please do.
Thank you, that was my other two. Just a few things that I picked up that technically I should probably comment on is that, well, the governance, obviously there's a placeholder in there to discuss governance and that's what the discussion was that Karen brought up. So we weren't necessarily advocating one or the other, except that there are a few different models. There are some very simple models and then there are some extremely complex models if you look at the way San Francisco does it with percentages of arts organizations and nonprofits and all that kind of thing. I think you want something that's going to be reasonable. I think everybody's agreeing that, you know, a residential component as well as commercial makes a lot of sense. So, on the governance, there's some flexibility there and we are providing advice, you know, as we move forward. The comments about the ITE being suburban to some degree, maybe that's true, but again, it's a large data set that's been vetted over and over again. It is currently in use for your impact fee and it's in use in San Francisco and other places that are more urban. Emeryville is unique, you know, there's just not a data set that would be Emeryville-specific, right? So we use something that's objective and that has been vetted. And I think the last question, there was something about some, the East Bay Shopping Center and what have you. Our analysis took into account every parcel that's within a quarter of a mile of a stop and some of those happen to be in Oakland or what have you. And we talked about this just before the meeting, the shopping center is completely included in the analysis that was done. Nothing was missed.
So, I have a question for you.
Yes.
With the, if this moves forward and is approved by ballot, does this trump prior conditions of approval for those complexes that had to pay in based on conditions?
What happens, well, in the current P-Bid essentially, for the conditions of approval, we consider them in regards to payment into the Emery Go-Round met as long as there is a P-Bid. If the P-Bid was to go away, then we go back to what the language in that condition of approval says, which could vary. I know, for example, East Bay Bridge, it says, "Shall provide a weekly shopper shuttle." That's the condition of approval for a shuttle. That kind of, you know, that condition of approval was when there was this discussion about an Emery Ground as opposed to there being an Emery Ground. And just to make the point about the East Bay Bridge a little bit more, is those parcels that are in Emeryville pay into the assessment district. Those parcels that are a part of the JPA with Oakland, that are in Oakland such as Target, for example, are not part of the assessment district, but they pay according to their conditions of approval, which are, you pay the P-Bid rate as long as there's a P-Bid. So, that's one of the parcels that we consider a direct build parcel. They're not in the assessment district, but we will get funding from that. And I believe, and I need to talk a little bit more with the assessment engineer, that that will actually end up reducing the city's contribution of general benefit because right now, you know, that would be one of those parcels that would be under general benefit since it's not within the assessment district.
Okay. Another question here. For the assessed anticipated revenue that this would generate, that would meet, would that meet only today's operating budget or would there be capacity to build reserves or to plan for system expansion?
This includes a operating contingency, a cash reserve, as well as a 3% cost of living increase every year. It does not include any service increases beyond, I think there's been some that are being made this year. That is not something that we can really calculate in a way that we could put it in a base. And there was some concern about having a P-Bid that you could have wildly varying requests for rate adjustments based upon service. This is where I think it will be important for the city to be able to work with the TMA to identify outside funding. You know, if we can get some of that ACTC or MTC or whatever money for that general benefit part or to expand service, which is usually what those kinds of funds are for, or more likely to be able to purchase buses. Right now, we're essentially capitalizing our ongoing revenue to pay for buses. So if we were able to get a grant for buses, that would provide more capacity for service expansion. But we did not do more than a 3% cost of living for the reasons that I just gave.
Thanks. So can you put up the slide where you want our feedback? I think you wanted a question about duration of the P-Bid and you recommended 15 years. And then, I think there was a governance question.
Yeah, the governance question really is, and it's whatever the council directs staff to do, but, no, we wanted to be able to have some time to talk to stakeholders, to develop not just the Board composition, but I know that there've been some questions about the bylaws and we didn't want to do it in a hurry. I think it's probably easier to come up with a Board composition than it is bylaws. But the idea was, and one thing that could potentially be done, assuming that our city attorney and assessment engineer agree, is that in addition to those kind of general language, that we make it a point of saying and that the city shall facilitate a discussion around the Board composition and the bylaws and enshrine that agreement in the multi-year agreement that the city has with the TMA. So the idea is that in order for monies to be released for the Emery Go-Round and for the TMA to act as the owner's representative, there has to be a contract between the city and the TMA to do that. So that is a place that really has just as much force as putting it in the management plan and it kind of puts the city as being kind of the mediator in the sense that, you know, there has to be something that all parties can live with in order for it to be included in the TMA contract that you would be then asked to approve. And that is a multi-year contract, it runs the length of the P-Bid. And so to change the composition or change bylaws after that would cause that contract to be amended by the council, which I think provides a lot of protection for all the different stakeholder interests to be equitable.
I have a question. So where in the calendaring would that contract fall?
In the past, it's always come to the council in November and December. It's kind of two bits. One is that in July for the August property rolls, that's when the TMA submits a preliminary budget and a recommendation for the levy. And then November, December is the compensation agreement, which is every year by resolution. But the base contract between the city and the TMA would be done essentially, probably it would be done in time for 2016 because that's the new service year and is only done, well, once unless amended for the life of the P-Bid. So, you know, that is a document that, you know, is pretty institutionalized in terms of specifics. And so that was the staff's recommendation is to use that document to be able to provide for Board composition bylaws that have had some discussion and all the stakeholders agree is a way to go forward. And that language, I would assume, could be added to the management plan as opposed to the more, you know, having, trying to work everything out and specify it in time to get out in time for the June 2nd council meeting.
Yes Scott.
This is just a question about what percent of parcel owners did not pay as a percentage of budget? Were you able to make 95% of the billed?
I don't remember the percentage off the top of my head, I didn't bring that with me, but I will say, is those that are part of the property rolls and don't pay, then a lien's against their property. And most people aren't paying, you know, they're either paying their property tax or they're not paying their property tax. So, you know, they're not choosing not to pay the P-Bid, but they're paying all the rest of their property taxes. So that's a relatively small amount of people. I mean, those are people who are defaulting on their property tax bill. The bigger issue are, I would say, the public agencies that historically we have, well, have not responded to direct bill. You know, their properties are not on the property roll, so, you know, they're not assessed that way nor do we have the opportunity to put a lien on their property if they don't pay. And, so without calling out public agencies, the city pays, I'll put it that way.
I would add for the school district, our master joint occupancy agreement for the ECL does include the, specifically included the provision of payment of the Emery Go-Round assessment as part of the operation and maintenance expenses that would be paid by the city and the school. So, it's meant to be captured there for, at least for the ECL project.
And I was just told that the complete non-payment is about $125,000 a year. But that's from all sources, but it's primarily public agencies. You know, we don't have a way of making the federal government pay.
Well, you can't sue them, but...
We sue them. Our city attorney's been on a roll recently, so...
You want to sue him before June 30th, girl?
So, is the council comfortable with these two, the staff recommendations here?
Yeah, Mayor, I can, in terms of the council direction, I think the 15-year term is one that will go well with the people who are voting. On the P-Bid governance, I think it was very clear from the comments made that we do want representation from residential owners. And the other thing is, I believe the engineer, you know, this whole discussion around ITE being a suburban instrument, it's the best that we have, it's been proven, it's been vetted, it's been attacked many times by the lawyers. So, it's not a perfect instrument, but it's one we can use, I think, successfully. And then, in terms of looking at the government institutions that don't pay, and I'm thinking about the feds, the post office and the, if the treasury hadn't moved out, they probably wouldn't have paid either. But, let us see if we can pursue a way to exclude them because that's a big chunk of money and if it's not coming in, it's queues your budget year after year after year. So with that, I would certainly support the staff recommendations. And I'd also like to give a real vote of appreciation to Karen and the engineer. It's a very complex job, it took a lot of time and to the Board of Directors of the TMA too. This service is critical to the economic and quality of life in this city and we've got to see that it moves forward.
I'd also like just to thank Diana Kena from the Community Development Department.
Oh absolutely.
She really helped with particularly some of the parcels and will be continuing to ask for her help. She's been invaluable in this.
All right, so, I also, before we adjourn this meeting, I want to say that this was a very complex project as well in that just even starting with differentiating between special benefit and general benefit was something, you know, I think we just had to get our minds around collectively and individually and so, this is a, this body of work does represent quite substantive brain power here. So, again, I also want to express my thanks for the work that's gone on to this and let's move forward.
Great.
So with that, the study session is adjourned. You're welcome to stay for a scintillating evening, but I'll give a two-minute break if people do want to move on. Let's move along.
Oh, I see.
We have a full night ahead of us. The next meeting is the City Council's Successor Agency, that's the blue agenda. And I'd like to call that meeting to order at, what, 7:21? And please call the roll again? I mean, we're all still here. Do we need to call the roll again? No. All right. Any public comments on items not on the successor agency agenda or on the successor agency's consent calendar?
Right now?
Yeah.
Oh, this is the, this is not the...
Okay, this is the successor agency, not the city council.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. That's without exception. Consent calendar is approved and there are no other action items and that meeting is This takes us to the regular city council agenda and please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Typically it's to Karen, the civic...
What is it?
Okay, so, I don't see any special orders of the day. I am gonna, so, we'll go to public comments on consent items and any other item that's not on the agenda. We will pull the minimum, second reading of the minimum wage.
Can we pull 5.6 too?
Oh wait, okay, so what do you want to pull?
5.9 minimum wage.
5.9, okay.
And 5.6.
What was the one you wanted, Jack?
5.6.
No, it's...
Just for comment.
And I'm going to pull 5.5 to read that.
Do we have public comment?
I asked for public comment, yeah. So, we're going to discuss items 5.5, 5.6 and 5.9 separately. If you want to speak on those items, you'll be able to do that separately. If there's any other public comment on any other consent items, now would be your time to talk to that. Come on up Joyce.
Joyce Jacobson for Admiral Drive, I want to speak to something that isn't on the agenda. I want to speak about my concerns about the harassment of small businesses that occurred a couple of weeks ago. And I'm particularly concerned, A, that it happened and secondly, I am concerned about the fact that the harassment was done in the name of supporting the city council and supporting a measure which the city council wished to pass. And I'd like to make a request to the city council that you address this issue and that you address it in a way... you address it in a way where you say something to the community at large about it, because we're having a certain amount of destabilization in the community right now, and I feel it's important that the city council speak out so that something like this harassment of small businesses and perhaps other individuals, too, is discontinued. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on that. I totally agree with that. As everybody here knows, harassing, harassment is illegal. It's a crime. You're not allowed to harass people. And I think, so, I agree with the speaker, the previous speaker, the city council should come out and tell everybody it's illegal to commit crimes. So I, I think you should do that. Have a meeting, tell everybody it's illegal to commit crimes. Thank you.
Yes. Selena Gonzalez, Black Bear Diner. Interesting that you would say it's illegal to commit crimes, being that you called my business Road Runner Mailing Services harassing them and accusing them of being funded by the Restaurant Association. I didn't appreciate him, appreciate what you did, and I tell, I did tell them, well, they should have called the police. I told them to tell you something else. But anyway, I do agree with this, this lady, that harassment is inappropriate.
Thank you. Brian, you're out of order. Only the person up at the dais with public comment can speak. So, and is, is there any other public comment? I neglected to, um, open this meeting, um, because I don't know how full the room is gonna be when we adjourn tonight, but I just want to acknowledge that, um, I want to, I'll be adjourning this meeting in, um, the memory of Jeremy Hamm, who was a former planning commissioner, and a dear member of the community. And, um, so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge his passing and the loss to the community, and, um, just honor him that way. So, um, and many of you in the, in this room have known him for a long period of time. So, um, that being said, um, there's no more public comments.
City managers report?
Yeah, is there a city manager's report?
No.
Okay, so is there a motion on the consent items that are, that are not being pulled?
Move the consent items that have not been pulled.
Second.
Okay. That's without exception. And, um, let me see, there's some other public comment here. I think, oops, just that.
She may want to comment on that.
Yeah, she, she made her comment. Just, no, I'm getting organized for public comment on the pulled items. Mr. Carpio, you, I don't know whether, what item this, you're, wanted to speak on, but why don't you come up now? You wanted to talk about retirement benefit?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up.
This is something that may disturb some, but I was just looking over my accessory bill, and, and what I found is that my accessory bill has what I pay now, amount to about three times the original amount I paid. And what I see, each time I see my accessory bill, there is always something that is added. And it's hard, because for, for the last 10 years, my retirement check has increased $20, and my accessory bill has increased $300. So, there is some discrepancy here, you know? And I'm sure most people who are retired feel in the same bind, that we are just, uh, subject to every amount, every month. And there is just nothing you can negotiate with the, with the pension system. They send you lots of notice when they increase to the cost of living, which is a couple dollars a year, you know? And, but they, if you talk to them about the, the tax you have to pay, then it's, it's, then they don't want to hear about it. And, and this is here. It's, it's a grievance for me. You all got together to get the wage increase, which is fine, yeah, but I don't see any retirement increase in the same manner or in the same percentage. So, you see, it's a, it's a grievance that I want to bring up and to your attention. And this is very serious, you see? I'm just too old to go armed robbery and get money from people, you know? But if I could, I guess I would hate some of you. Thank you.
This is, um, I'm moving on to 5.5, and I want to read this proclamation that we have tonight. Is David McPherson here? Okay. All right, well, 5.5 is a proclamation honoring the Townhouse and Ellen Rosenberg's 25th anniversary. So, um, this is a City of Emeryville proclamation honoring the Townhouse Bar and Grill and Ellen Hope Rosenberg's 25th anniversary, and proclaiming May 24th, 2015 as Townhouse Bar and Grill and Ellen Hope Rosenberg Day. Whereas the Townhouse has been an Emeryville institution since its speakeasy days during prohibition starting in 1926, and whereas the Townhouse has enjoyed several colorful owners, including Joe Vernetti and Bob McManus, and its days of live country and western music and dancing, and whereas besides attracting country-western fans, the Townhouse was also the hub of local political activity, presided over by the former police chief John Lacoste, who called the Townhouse "Emeryville City Hall East." And whereas by 1987, the urban cowboy days were gone, and the Townhouse had fallen on hard times and was closed and bordered up. And whereas in 1989, after honing her culinary skills at La Varenne in, in Paris, and Michael's, oh boy, I don't, can't...
Lingerie.
Lingerie in Spago in Los Angeles, Ellen Hope Rosenberg had a moment of clarity, and she decided that she wanted to spend her life savings on an abandoned dusty greasy bar that was filled with old wagon wheels and moose heads and snake skins, and was located in a town that Chief Justice Earl Warren once famously called "the rottenest city on the Pacific coast." And whereas in 1990, after many months of demanding work and collaboration with French restaurateur Joseph Lebrun, Ellen and her loyal staff opened the doors of the Townhouse Bar and Grill, now a sophisticated but comfortable restaurant with white tablecloths and a welcoming copper-topped bar. And whereas the Townhouse Bar and Grill has been consistently recognized and praised by food critics, patrons, and the Emeryville Chamber Commerce alike, and whereas many of the Townhouse staff have shown remarkable loyalty over two decades, and while securely employed, those staff have married, raised families, and continue to bring their skills to work every day. Whereas over the last 25 years, the Townhouse Bar and Grill and its owner Ellen Hope Rosenberg have established and grown a strong and thriving business and civic partner. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Ruth Atkin, Mayor of the City of Emeryville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 24th, 2015 as Townhouse Bar and Grill and Ellen Hope Rosenberg Day in Emeryville, and we ask residents to join us in celebrating their 25th anniversary and our wishes for their continued success and prosperity proclaimed today, this 19th day of May. So, I don't think he's here to take it, but I'll...
Let the staff have it.
We'll make sure he gets it.
Yeah, thank you. So, I move approval of that proclamation.
Second.
Without exception. This takes us to 5.6. You wanted to comment, Jack?
Yeah, I just, um, this is a resolution to approve, um, the funding for Prop 49, which supports our after-school programs in Emeryville. And I just wanted to take this moment to, um, let the public know that we've had tremendous growth and success in our after-school programs. They've grown by almost threefold at this point, and it's such a pleasure to see our kids out on the, the fields after school. This year, we had a basketball team that was put together for the first time, and they got to go to the semifinals, and they were very excited about it. Apparently, there was cake, and there were trophies involved, and they're all very proud. And so I just want to, uh, let the public know that, uh, I think we've had a pent-up demand for after-school programming, and, um, we're now meeting that and, and watching it flourish, so it's good news.
I second your motion.
Without exception, that 5.6 passes, and this goes to, takes us to 5.9, which is the second reading of the minimum wage ordinance. Michael, you want to talk to us first?
Yes.
All right.
I have a short presentation for you tonight.
Mayor Atkin, could we get an idea of how many people are here to speak to this item?
Sure. Council wants to know how many of you are here on this item tonight, minimum wage. I don't have that many speaker cards.
There's some here, move to...
If, oh, okay, never mind. If you want to speak on this item, go ahead and fill out a yellow card and give it to the city clerk.
Go ahead, Michael.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Michael Gina, Assistant City Attorney, and I'm here to speak tonight on the city's minimum wage and paid sick leave ordinance. This is the second reading, the, this item's on the agenda for the second reading of the ordinance. The council adopted the first reading at your last meeting. The reason that we wanted to present a short, a short presentation tonight is because there was, since the publication of the staff report and agenda, there have been additional, there's been additional amendments which the staff would like to propose to the ordinance. And, uh, the, it, a lot of it is cleanup language, there's some, there are some other changes as well, which we would like to highlight for you. And, uh, so, staff is recommending that before the city council go forward and adopt the second reading, that you consider the amendments that we would like to present to you in just a moment, and then give us some direction as to whether or not you would like to, um, adopt those amendments tonight. If you do so, that would require a new first reading of the ordinance. With a second reading to be taking place at your June 2nd meeting, that would allow the ordinance to take effect on July 2nd, instead of the July 1st date, which is currently projected to do. And I'll highlight again the, the timeline for you. So that being said, I'll just dive right in. So as I said, the purpose of this is to, uh, highlight for you some proposed amendments to our ordinance, which have been brought to the attention of staff through our review, through comments that we'd received from the public. We also wanted to then talk about what that would mean in terms of the timeline for implementation. We'd ask that you take public testimony, and then you either adopt the second reading of the ordinance as currently published, or adopt the first reading of the amended ordinance. So the next series of slides will be red line of the sections that we would propose would be amended. The language that would be, that we're proposed to, that's proposed to be stricken is in the red strikeout text, and the language that we propose to be adopted in its place is, is in the red highlight text. So the first section is 537.01, regarding the definition of small business. The changes are, are there on the slide. The reason that we're proposing this is to tighten up the definition of a small business. We want to make clear that the persons that, that the small business employees would be employees that are defined previously as an employee under the terms of the ordinance.
Michael?
Yes.
Can you just go back to that real quick?
Yeah.
You'll see on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th line, uh, the term employer is in red, and we, and in small, in lowercase, that should have been stricken, and, and then of course employer capitalized is, is what we're asking for. So, thanks.
Thank you for this. The next proposed amendment is to 537.02 sub-D. This is regarding learners. So, the, what was discussed at the, and proposed at the la, at the first reading is that a learner, as that term is defined by the, by the state, would be paid 85% of the applicable minimum wage. We would want to clarify that they would be paid no less than 85% of the applicable minimum wage. They certainly could be paid more if the, if the employer so chose. Paid sick leave. So this is in regard, if I could bring you back to AB 1522, which is the state paid sick leave, paid sick leave provisions. In our, in our earlier presentations, we had highlighted for you how the state law has certain provisions for paid sick leave, and we had asked direction about whether or not the city council would want to provide protections that are above and beyond the, the state requirements. One of those was the amount of paid sick leave that an employee could use on, in any given year. The provisions of AB 1522 provide that an employee could only use up to 24 hours of paid sick leave each year, regardless of how much paid sick leave, how many paid sick leave hours that employee has actually accrued. The direction from council was to allow an employee to use as much paid sick leave as they have accrued over time, and, um, we, in our earlier version of the ordinance, we had inadvertently not included that in the provision, even though our, our, even though our staff report had clearly indicated that that was the intent of the council. So this would add, uh, this would add a new section, sub-C3, which would specify that an employee would be allowed to use the amount of paid sick leave that he or she has accrued. Enforcement. Section 53707 sub-D2 was a provision regarding the enforcement of the ordinance, and the earlier version had provided that an employer would not, was prohibited from funding the increases in compensation by reducing the compensation to the employees or taking away other benefits such as pension, vacation, and other non-wage benefits. We had received a comment letter from, uh, from a law firm representing the, a group of small businesses, who had expressed concern about how the language as currently written might run afoul of federal ERISA statutes. And so the purpose of this proposed change is to clarify that, is to basically get us out of that arena and carve out exception, you know, carve out that, that, as long as the, that there couldn't be any reduction of benefits that would be, that would run afoul of the ERISA statute. Those are the proposed changes that we are highlighting for you tonight. If the city council wishes to adopt...
Can you, can you go back?
Sure.
So there's, there's really two options for the council. One is to essentially delete that provision altogether, or to, to provide for this amendment. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Okay, so if the city, so there are two options for the council tonight. If you choose to adopt these amendments, and a fir, that would constitute a first reading of the ordinance as, as amended, and that would happen at tonight's meeting, the second reading of the... of the, of the amended ordinance would then take place at your June 2 meeting, and the ordinance would take effect 30 days thereafter on July 2, 2015. If the City Council did not choose to adopt the new amendments tonight, and instead adopt the second reading of the ordinance as had been previously adopted at your May 5 meeting, then you would adopt the second reading tonight, and then the effective date of the ordinance would be July 1, 2015.
Can I just to add, in that, we would then, the idea would be to come back at your next meeting with an ordinance that would then provide for these revisions that we've shown you tonight.
Therefore, our recommendation is that you take public testimony, and then you provide direction to staff about how you would like to move forward with a proposed amendments. Again, if you were to amend the ordinance tonight, then that revised ordinance would be, we recommend that you would introduce that after a motion to read by title only, and then adopt the first reading. If you choose to adopt the May 5 version of the ordinance, then you would adopt the second reading of that ordinance. And that's the conclusion of my report. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions before I open it up to the public? Okay. So there's a few speakers. I'm going to call three in a row, just stand behind the first speaker, so we can just go ahead. You can have two minutes. Kristina Hanks, Tom Devine, Susanna Handow.
So I support Emeryville's small business. I'm here tonight representing the Emeryville Small Business that's been established in 2015, or 2005, so 10 years this past March. First and foremost, my issue is not at all with a gradual wage increase. Let's do it prudent, regional, and with time to prepare. Where I do find great discomfort in this whole process, many businesses are not even aware of what is really taking place, ill-informed and lacking adequate detailed information from the city. We, small business owners, do not have a lobbyist, an organized leader, or any other spokesman to plead our case. What seems is happening in Emeryville is that whoever can garner the most people to a meeting, scream the loudest, is taking precedent in the governance. There's no, there's, it's not anything different than Citizens United or some kind of super PAC, it seems like. If you truly support small business in Emeryville, this is not the kind of process that demonstrates that positively.
Tom Devine.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Atkins and the council, for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Tom Devine, and I am a member of the senior leadership team at Paul Duke Fine Catering, right down the block. And I've been elected to discuss our company views with regards to the passing of the ordinance as it's written now. And first and foremost, the company wants you to know that we do support and congratulate the committee on moving the needle towards a living wage. We realize the increased expenses here in the city, and we respect that. But I'm here, more importantly, to implore that we take a more measured implementation of the ordinance. And we feel that it's not responsible to move it forward so quickly without giving businesses a fair amount of time to work that through their own business models and pricing structures. And with that, we would recommend that it's no less than six months of a implementation process. And to tell you a little bit about our company, we've never paid anyone minimum wage at its current rate. We've always been 20% at least higher than the current minimum wage. And catering, like the restaurant business, is highly competitive. It's very labor-intensive, and the margins are thin. And catering, unlike the restaurant industry, has some similarities to manufacturing. All the events we do and the products we make are proposed six to eight months in advance. So any kind of quick implementation of a dramatic increase like this, which is 60% over minimum wage, has a net impact to my company of 40% would equate, just in this six-month period from July through December of 2015, of $100,000 in additional costs. And we like to think of ourselves as a partner with the city here on moving this wage forward, but in the manner that it's being done, it feels like a penalty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So after Susanna Handow, Mark B. and Rahel Gerard, I'm not sure about that name, I'm sorry. Susanna.
Hi. Good evening, council. I'm Susanna Handow with Scarlet City Espresso Bar. As I spoke to the council previously on this issue, we absolutely support increasing the minimum wage to 1225 right away. We already pay more than that. We think that that's the right thing to do. And we believe that having a plan for going forward to move it beyond that is really important. We do think this is really rushed. We do think that particularly in the food service sector, this is coming, this, it makes very small margins very, very difficult. I'm seeing from my partners in Oakland, who are already dealing with this increase, that it's not going well. And I'm seeing from my partners in the city of Emeryville, who have preemptively made changes to $15 an hour, that their plans to manage those costs are also failing. It turns out that people are not really willing to pay the prices for food that food actually costs, especially when dining out. We need time, not only to figure out how we're going to fund these changes, but we need time for the community to get ready to take on the responsibility of paying for what they ask for in their foods and services. They're not ready. They're not going to pay it. And if we had just a little bit more community conversation, we might see people recognizing what it's going to take out of their wallet if they really want to get behind this measure. And maybe they'll have a time, have a chance to get around it, you know, get their heads around it, and be supportive, and really be there for the small businesses in their community. What I think they're going to do instead, what my associates in this city and others are seeing, is that they're staying home. And that's bad, because what that means, like my friends at Grand Tavern, is they laid off half their staff. So those people are getting much less than 1225 an hour. They're getting $0 an hour, because those jobs are gone, and now that owner works every shift.
Thank you. Mark B. Hang on a sec, Mark. At the last meeting, I opened public comment by saying that we have a history and a tradition of being respectful during public comment, and I actively discouraged booing and clapping. And if people want to show support for a speaker, you can shake signs, or you can do deaf applause, or something like that. But I will not tolerate that kind of thing again. And we can, I can adjourn this meeting, and we can all go home, and I don't think that's what people necessarily want to have happen. So I would ask that you be respectful and contain your reactions to public comment. Thank you.
I've been a small business owner in Emeryville for almost 15 years, and I support positive, meaningful community action that benefits those in poverty. I strongly oppose this minimum wage ordinance. But more than opposing this ordinance, I oppose the process. I oppose your rushing this through, and I oppose how extreme, aggressive, and dramatic it is intended to be. Fundamentally, the ordinance seems punitive rather than progressive. It is an angry, knee-jerk reaction against the 1%, the 1% who are not here in this room because they will not be impacted. I believe the error of our times, the one that our generation will sadly be remembered for, is the idea that governance is an act of aggression, that to help some, we must hurt someone else, that there is no mutual interest, that middle ground is a concession to the enemy, and that a community is just a fight between different special interests. While we all know in our hearts that this is nonsense, we play out our public discourse as though we are the only heroes and the opponents the villains. We have rallies to turn real people into hateful caricatures, to turn complex issues into quippy phrases that fit on signs. And in the process, we divide our community. We forget that our goals are shared, and we reduce intelligent discourse to self-righteous intolerance. The government is no longer a Solomon balancing the varied interests that come before it, but just a screaming child shouting for its way. Government becomes little more than a pendulum that swings back and forth, each side trying, when they come into power, to one day up the other in their extremism and intransigence. I see this today in our own city. I would ask you to reflect on how you've gone about your business as City Council, and whether you have been wise. I would ask you to consider whether your actions have united or divided, and I would ask you to answer whether this is really what government should be.
Rahel, I'm not sure if it's an Gerard or DeR, sorry. Come on up.
Hi. My name is Rahel Gerard, and I'm from 7-Eleven. Me and my father run it. We just came to the city about three years ago, before all of this happened. But anyway, so I stumbled upon a quote from one of our council members that said, "I think our businesses will be creative enough to make it work, and we'll lift up together." Although that sounds great, the reality is that it'll place a huge burden on our business and all small businesses. I've only come up with three ways to make it work, and none of them benefit either side. And that's laying off employees, raising prices, passing them off to consumers, and cutting our profit margin, which isn't much to begin with. So, you know, we're a franchise, and if you want, you know, we can bring you our last year, or past couple of years' salary, and it's probably not half of what you guys make. And that's with us working 15-hour days, you know? We only have four employees, and none of them are minimum wage. You know, all of them are family to us. And actually, all of them are concerned about how we're going to do after these increases. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind. You know, we already work way too hard. It's a struggle, as it is, and I don't know how we can compete after, after this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Lin, Cass Magliozzi, Rob Arias.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Lin. I'm with the East Bay Alliance for a Sustainable Economy and the Lift Up East Bay Coalition. And I want to thank the council and the staff for the hard work that's been done over the past few months. I want to say tonight, I'm hearing very deeply from the business community here, and while I, I agree with one of the previous speakers that there should be a lot more consensus than there is. We were here a few weeks ago, a little over a month ago, where small businesses and workers and community people were all supporting 1225. And that was a momentous occasion in the region, and something that we really feel like is, is a movement to build. We, on the side of workers and communities, support small businesses in every city where we're fighting to raise the wage. We believe in a diverse local economy, and we believe raising wages is a part of that solution. So I'll just say, you know, two weeks ago, you heard from, you saw over 50 supporters of raising the wage now in, here in Emeryville. You heard from several dozen speakers, workers, who are struggling to make it on minimum wage, supporting their own families, wanting to put more local money into the economy. And specifically to the issues being raised tonight, on the legal issues, we would support the amended language that's being put forward regarding retaliation and enforcement. We believe the language that is put forward will both protect workers against retaliation and also protect the city against illegal ERISA preemption issues. And I'll just end, you know, 1225 is a start. I understand that for some businesses, it is going to be a stretch. There were businesses here two weeks ago, from Ayers Mendy, supportive businesses from Commonwealth Pub, that believe it's the right thing to do. It may be a stretch in the short term, but they're willing to do it because it's right for the community. So I would also support the council. I believe at the last meeting talked about looking at the city's budget and figuring out ways to support small businesses in concrete ways. And we in the community and in the worker movement would be glad to support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Cass?
Hi. I'm Cass Magliozzi, and I work with fast-food workers who have been standing up for making a wage that allows them to meet their basic needs, like groceries, rent, supporting their kids. And I heard somebody else talk about how businesses are being asked to be creative enough, but actually, workers who haven't been making enough to meet their basic needs, story after story is about how they've had to be innovative and creative just to survive, right? Like, it's not about a profit margin, it's just about surviving. We've been asking them for years to meet that level of creativity. And so this is about their ability to pay rent for groceries, for their kids to have extracurriculars and have food on the table, right? And we also support the language, the amended language that would protect them from retaliation. And workers have asked me to come today to share some stories about what happened in Oakland. When Oakland did raise up their minimum wage, a lot of employers were quick to react by trying to cut hours and trying to retaliate against workers that they knew had been standing up for their rights. And workers like Shonda Roberts, like Julio Aguiar at KFC Downtown, they had their hours cut. So it meant literally that week that, like, they had to be calling their landlords, right? And they had to be thinking about second jobs and taking more hours, if Julio has to work all night as a security guard, and then back at KFC in the morning. So they petitioned their employer, and they had almost every single person in their store, including managers, sign on to that petition, and their hours were returned to a full schedule. And that's really essential for these workers. So we're asking that when you raise the minimum wage, you also do so in a way that allows workers that basic protection so that it counts for them, and that it doesn't end up hurting them on the back end when they're trying to, like, be able to plan their financial lives on this level of, like, basic needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Arias, and then after Rob, John Nemec and Mauro Rivero.
I want to apologize for that outburst, first of all. And I also wanted to apologize for standing up at the last meeting. I literally had a plane catch. I want to say that I'm not afraid of unions, and why would I be? I represent small businesses. And unions aren't anti-small business. They are not natural adversaries here. It was council that pitted unions against small business that we saw. And I think this is sad for the city. We advocated for a regional approach to keep Emeryville's small businesses competitive with our neighbors who surround us. In fact, at the April study session, no small businesses spoke out against raising the minimum wage. Anyone who says so or wants to spin it and say something to the contrary is just a liar. We asked council for a regional approach in line with our neighbors. In fact, a full one-third of speakers, and even some labor groups, spoke in favor of a regional approach. That's for small businesses. You ignored us. We heard a lot of path-to-15 approach. Nobody, nobody asked for $16 an hour in 2009, so the highest wage in the nation. Council, you're acting alone on this. You made concessions on the size of small businesses in some very accelerated time phases, but to say small businesses got everything they want, that's just another lie. And I want the record to reflect this. Councilmember's brother and someone three of you who are affiliated with came into small businesses and called them and harassed them, and you did nothing. You ignored this. I also want the record to reflect that a member of council is sharing their personal emails with this person, and small business emails to this person. 115 members of the small business community and residents asked a study be performed to look into the effects on youth employment, layoffs, and the price of goods for fixed-income people. Same study, in fact, that staff recommended be performed back in January, that councilmember Asher moved to remove from the schedule. I also want the record to reflect that Oakland and SF got to vote on this. Emeryville City Council is not giving the public a say in this, I can guarantee you.
Thank you, Mark. That's your time.
Thank you.
John Nemec, Mauro Rivero.
Hi. I'm John Nemec, and I have a small manufacturing company in Emeryville. I've spoken before, and as I mentioned, we manufacture suspenders. And before you get into this business, you make a lot of sacrifices. You know, you work for nothing, you work for half a minimum wage, or the minimum wage doesn't matter, the number of hours you work, it doesn't matter, and you work for two or three years. I brought my boy from Czech Republic. She basically, she taught tailoring in Czech Republic, and they can teach tailoring, have to go through three years of school. And we work with people who have no skills, and she's teaching them. She works long hours, 10, 11 hours a day. She works on Saturdays, sometimes on Sundays. She is paid $48,000 a year. And if I would calculate her wage based on the hour and overtime, she'll be working for about $12.75 an hour. Okay? The other thing that I want to mention is this. I borrowed against my house $500,000. And I borrowed it against the equity against my house, and I said, "Now I'm being put out of business because, you know, we cannot justify increase to $150,000 or $400,000 a year if it goes to $14." So I applied for a loan, for a 30-year loan. So I applied for a loan, for a 30-year loan. I was declined because they said, "I don't make enough money in my company." Yet my employees, like Neil McDonald, he makes $48,000 in sales, he bought a duplex. Susan Newman, she has a $200,000 loan on her house. Bupi, who is from India, she bought a duplex, and they all, they do well. And none of my employees live in Emeryville, by the way. And if you're so concerned about...
Thanks.
Allow me to finish the sentence, please. If you're so concerned about high cost of rents in Emeryville, make rent control instead of busting 40-year-old business, instead of putting 40-year-old business out of business. Thank you.
Mauro Rivero, then Mike Gaben, then Brian Donahue.
Hi, council. Good evening. My name is Mauro Rivero from Black Bear Diner. We have been preparing for the increase, and so we've been, you know, to the other small businesses, I know, I've been there. So I really know the struggles they're going through of where they're at financially, on their balance sheet to try and keep up. Fortunately, you know, with the good work and the luck that we've had, we've been able to go beyond that. My question tonight is on getting clarification from the city attorney on how you're going to define the small business, the 55 employees, and whether or not that will count. I mean, if you're going to count us as, if we're part of the franchise or, you know, of other organizations, because there's been some conflicting information going around that we've been quite concerned about it, because we are a franchisee, and we do belong to, we pay our franchise fee to a much larger organization. So I just want to make sure tonight somehow that we get a further clarification from the city attorney or the city council as to how, as a franchisee, we will be counted. Will the other franchisees be included as part of that count, or is it just the people that we employ here in Emeryville?
It's just people you employ in Emeryville?
Okay, so just the people?
That's it.
That's it, simple as that.
That's it.
All right, so that makes it a lot easier.
That's it.
Because, like I said, so much, you know, conflicting information. But, and finally, once again, as I said, to, you know, the smaller businesses have been expressing their, what's happening to them. I mean, yes, please keep in mind what they're saying, and, you know, I'm just blessed to be beyond that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Good evening, councilmember. My name is Mike Gaben. I'm with Black Bear Diner. Mayor, I'm glad that you clarified that for us. That's been a very big concern for us with regards to the small business count, because we were concerned that the way that it read, the definition read that it would, we'd have to add our accountant, and anyone that worked for us for compensation, the guy that washed the windows, the guy that did the carpet cleaning, and everybody else would be accounted to that 55 number, and that would have been catastrophic for us, especially since we're right on the cuff in terms of the amount of employees that we have. Now, I wanted to kind of reiterate a little bit more on the difference. I think there's a lot of misconception on what they look at Black Bear Diner as they look at Denny's or IHOP. It's very important to understand that, for example, people like us and like these folks that are, have the 7-Eleven, they're not a franchisor. They're just like anyone that has bought a business, Mike's Deli down the street, and they're working for a living. We pay the franchisor a fee for operating the business. And so there needs to be a clear distinction between the two, because getting, we feel like we're getting trampled on as part of big business, big box, and that's not really the case for people like us that are franchisees. Maybe Black Bear Diner or Denny's or IHOP, those are the big franchisors. But us, we're still small business that have invested our hard work, hard work and money to run a business. The only difference is that we're using the Black Bear Diner name with a fee that we pay them. And so it's very important to make that distinction, because we, it seems like in all the blogs that I'm reading and everything that I'm reading, Black Bear Diner, Denny's, IHOP, 7-Eleven, big box. And I think we need to make that distinction so we're able to make clearer decisions. And I thank you.
Brian?
Okay. First, I'd like to say that that woman right there.
Selena.
Selena. And that man right there, Rob Arias. Both those people just now slandered me. So they're alleging I committed a crime. And Nora's laughing about this. If somebody commits a crime, let me say it again, Nora. If somebody commits a crime, your remedy is to call the police. That goes for you and for you, too. You call the police when a crime's been committed, okay? That's the bright line in America. Now, I'm talking to Mr. Arias and to you and to Ms. Davis. If a crime has been committed, you call the police. And what you don't do is you don't slander people. So I reject, I didn't commit the crime, so that makes Mr. Arias, that was a lie. Mr. Arias just told a lie, because I'm telling you right now, I did not commit that crime. The onus is on you, Mr. Arias.
Brian?
Have me arrested.
Direct your comments to the council, not to members, not to private individuals.
Well, he just did it to me. And so have other people. Other people turn around and talk to the audience, it's very common. So the onus is on Mr. Arias. And anybody else that wants to slander me, have me arrested, okay? You know, that, if you can get me arrested, well, then I'll, then you'll have made a point that maybe I did commit a crime. But barring that, you know, stop slandering people. Okay, now I want to talk about Measure C. I mean, I've lived, I've lived near Emeryville a long time, and one of the nice things about having lived here a long time is you get to see, there's a culture here. And that Measure C was the last time we raised the minimum wage in this town, and we heard it's going to be a calamity. All the businesses that were going to have their wages that they have to pay to their employees go up, were telling us that they're going to leave Emeryville, flee this town, they're going to go out of business. You're destroying the, you're destroying the hospitality industry.
That's your time.
Bunk. It was not destroyed. Thank you very much.
Next is Selena Gonzalez, Shum Preston, and Trudy Timmell.
Counsel, thank you very much. Mr. Donahue, my condolences. We've all got one in the family, I think. What I would really like to talk on is the new language, that, you know, I'm happy to see that. I know you saw the emails that I sent out today, and I addressed you specifically on the question. And one point I want to make is that changing, that you stated that small business was only considered employees who are within the city of Emeryville, that if there are other business entities out there, it doesn't matter, it's what's within the city of Emeryville. You've clarified that. However, that's only if you adopt this language, is my understanding. So that's a point of clarification. The second thing on this ordinance is, it still says same business entity. It's still using the language same business entity as opposed to just employer. And my question, I'd like clarification tonight, if you could, please, is what do you mean? Please define what you mean by same business entity, and why was that put into the language? Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Shum Preston with SEIU, 10 to 1. I just want to take a moment to remind us of the context of why we're here, which is that poverty is a crisis in this country. It's gotten worse. We're worse off than the previous generations before us, and government, not necessarily at the local level only, but also at the state and federal level, hasn't addressed that. Within that context, we live today in a moment in which throughout the West Coast, wages are rising. I bring that up to let you know that today, the context in which all these debates happening isn't personality disputes or who said what on a blog or whatever. But more importantly, today, in the city of Los Angeles, the city council voted 14 to 1 to raise the wages to $15 by 2020. 3.89 million people in the city of Los Angeles, over 1 million employees. And I want to remind us again of the context with the words of Mayor Eric Garcetti today in the New York Times. He said, "We're leading the country. We're not going to wait for Washington to lift Americans out of poverty. We have too many adults struggling to be living off a poverty wage. This will reestablish some of the equilibrium we've had in the past." What Eric Garcetti today said in Los Angeles is equally true here in Emeryville. I ask us to remember the larger context of why we're here and why the vote you guys have taken is so important. Thank you.
Trudy Timmell?
Hi. I'm representing myself and also probably residents united for livable Emeryville. I am a great supporter of small businesses. I don't have a sign to wave, but I try to patronize small businesses as much as possible. I ran a small business for many years. But I'm also a citizen who cares about workers. Workers are also customers of our small businesses, and when they receive wage raises, they circulate that money throughout the economy, and they'll become customers of other small businesses. So we all pay when workers need public assistance because they can't live on their salaries. We'll all benefit when the base is raised. It's a matter of how overdue this raise is, how many years it's been coming. It seems very abrupt, perhaps, to some who haven't been reading the newspapers, watching television, but it's happening all over, and it's, I'm happy that it's happening here in my city. The headline in the Chronicle the other day was that it takes a minimum wage of $79 an hour to afford an average apartment in San Francisco. Are we quibbling about $12 an hour here? It seems, it seems crazy. We've had consensus on 1225. We've heard from workers, and we've heard that small businesses are in support of this, and we're just talking about a timeline. It's just overdue, and I think you need to go ahead. I agree with the amendments, and thank you for putting yourselves out there. Thank you.
All right, so that concludes public comment.
Can you give your card to the city clerk, please?
I see you, Mr. Carpio. I guess this doesn't conclude public comment.
I wanted to hear, I wanted to hear what everyone had to say before I said anything. And I don't really, while I was sitting there listening, I was trying to come together with some thoughts, but I think the basic thing that I really want to communicate is that, first, thank you. Thank you, city council. Thank you, mayor, for really being courageous in stepping up and doing something that is extremely long overdue. So I said several meetings ago that I live in East Oakland, I do shop here a lot, and due to a personal tragedy in my own life that had to do very much with poverty in our community, our broader community, resulted in the death of my youngest son. Okay? Now, that's just one part of poverty. There is a reality here.
Just speak to me.
There is a reality here of thousands of people living in our broader community who try very hard, work very hard, and put hours and hours of their life into trying to keep their families together, trying to make a decent living. And we don't really help them doing that because we have allowed the minimum wage to stay so low. And an employer will be able to pick and choose, and of course, I will hire you as an employer if I can get you for $8 an hour rather than pay someone else a higher wage. So raising the minimum wage is a real important and necessary step to enable people to climb out of poverty. Now, 1225 is a really good start, but it is a start. And for small businesses, you know, sure, working hard and trying to, you know, to feed your families is an honorable thing to do, but we can't do it at the expense of others. And by holding back and stopping and trying to delay the minimum wage, which is, in fact, what's going on in many cases, you know, we can all construct arguments to get to where we want to get and to cause delays, to have the effects that we want. The reality is, there's a human cost to doing that, and you have to take responsibility for that. And if people get angry when they find out you're doing it, well, I'm sorry. You know, people get angry at me when I cut them off on the, you know, because I'm not being conscientious when I'm driving, okay? You know, I deserve it then. But if you act in a way that is harmful, and really harmful, delaying this, it is, in fact, a reason for people to get angry, it's the public to get angry, and they will, they find out, and of course, they feel bad about it. So I would like that to be understood, and also to keep in mind that there is a real cost to poverty and delaying people's opportunity to get out of it. So thank you very much.
Redan Nemec?
I'm open to the question. Please.
You don't want to speak?
No.
He already spoke, so I'm going to, then you'll pass. Okay. The summer, summer person or Luca, I'm sorry, and the bureau speakers, come on up. I'm sorry, I can't steal the names, so I apologize.
My name is James Sansan Kasgun from the Bureau 510. I just want to express my disappointment to the process of this, what we call study. It seems to, it seems like we only used a really small sample of what show up in this room, which, three weeks now, has only been the same people that I, that I can see. There's a lot, very little fact check, a lot of feeling, but not enough hard data to support the decision. For example, one meeting, we decided the date would be in October. A week after that, we changed it to July, which seems like the decision just came up. Number of employee that we decide 55 would be a definition for small business, that also just came up from one business. There's no study to really define that. So just going forward, I was, I just wish that there is more strategy and planning and data to support all this. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you so much for letting me speak again. I think we are confused about the words minimum wage. I don't think that minimum wage is for everybody, and it's not for every wage. Minimum wage is for the first-time worker who has no experience. For example, some of my dishwasher, who just came, and this is their work, the first work in their life, they earn minimum wage. After three months, they earn more than minimum wage. And the only people in my restaurant who earn minimum wage is the servers, because they earn $15 to $20 per hour tips on top of that. I actually earn a lot less than my employee, but I still want to have my business to be survived. And I work 60 hours per week. My husband works full-time, and he'll help out every night after work. And we put all the life-saving into our business, and we really want our business to be here in the city. But it, I just feels like the way you guys push for the minimum wage, you don't give us time to adjust, or you don't give us time to think how we can survive in the hike like Yeah, I think, I think I just really surprised, as my husband mentioned, that last time, last meeting, last two meeting, there are a lot of supporter for the minimum wage, and you guys just decided to go on that direction without any concern or without any finding the truth or the fact of what is really neat or going on here. Thank you.
Mr. Carpio?
I just want to get some clarification here. When we talk about the minimum wage, are we, are we including those who have made prior arrangement with their employer, that, for instance, they, they like to have a job at any... with their employer that, for instance, they like to have a job at any—at any cost? Or that they would like to have a more interesting job? And I could cite my experience. When I had my job, the people who work for R and R take a part and put it back, you know, they get a basic wage. But then, those people, after a while, they wanted to get in the line that was more interesting. And I told them, because of that, then I could not afford, because the estimate given, you know, would not allow the same wage as for the R and R and for the repair itself. So, if employee made arrangement with his employer to work for less, I don't know how is your position. You can enforce a higher wage if both have agreed on a prior condition, and that it may be contrary to the ordinance, but how do you deal with that? Because I'm sure some people will be faced that problem. Thank you.
All right. I see no more public comment. Closed public comment at this point, and we have council—yeah.
Can we just bring up the definition of a small business real quick?
Right.
Because we would suggest one other little correction to that. You'll see the—it's the seventh line down, and it—the line starts with "same business And our suggestion would be to strike that phrase and put in its place the term "employer."
Capitalize.
Employer in the capo.
Correct.
Okay. That's a good amendment.
Then, it's covered by state law.
So—
Mayor Atkins, I have a question for Mr. Biddle.
Yeah.
And this is on the changes to the ERISA language. Do you—is your professional opinion that this will provide some protection from legal challenge?
Yes, we've specifically accepted out any revisions that would otherwise be preempted by ERISA. So, you couldn't reduce somebody's benefits that were otherwise—that change was preempted.
So, there's no conflict there with the state or federal law?
And looking at—no, and certainly, the letter from the lawyer, from Donnie Gallagher, his real issue was about the preemption for benefits, and so, we believe this addition takes care of that issue.
Thank you.
I'm on your side.
All right. Any other clarifications or questions to the staff?
Counsel.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, I want to appreciate the public for restraining yourselves after I chided you. I thought we were able to have a civil—for the most part—a civil discourse, and I do want to say that activities of private individuals that cross a line is something that I don't personally condone. So, that being said, I think—
Mayor Atkins, can I respond to that comment? I take very seriously the letters that the council has received from small businesses and other people in the community about issues of harassment and intimidation and threats to their business. At the Public Safety Committee last Thursday, I asked the Public Safety Committee to address this issue with a community meeting to define exactly what is harassment, intimidation, threatening behavior? What is the proper procedure when someone comes into your place of business or intimidates you in a public section? What can you do? I think it deserves discussion, and I—the Scott Donahue seconded me on this request, and I believe the police chief is going to pursue this matter, and we will see something on this in two or three weeks. Just to let people know that there's two members of the council here who absolutely take exception to this type of behavior in the city.
So, I think the council is wanting to accept staff's amendments, so that tonight would then constitute a first reading. Do I read—
Move to read by title only.
I would support that route.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Second.
I appreciate the last change to "the same business."
Okay.
So, and just every—every one of them, and not delete, but on 07, do the change.
Right.
Correct.
Right. I think that's our consensus.
Yeah, and Mayor Atkins, if I can make another comment. This is certainly not a perfect instrument. It is certainly not a perfect process. We're stumbling along here. Some people are going to benefit; some people are going to be harmed very seriously by it. But I believe we must move forward on this, so I would—I would—I'm glad to see that the council sees that we move ahead with this amended ordinance.
Thank you. I think a lot of us could take up a lot more airtime here, talking about why all of us want to move forward with this, but I do want to comment that this is taking a slower pace that starts—that recognizes the particular needs of small businesses, because they're not going to start at 1444, like the other businesses are going to start at that rate, and that that has become, through the actions of Oakland and San Francisco, our regional minimum wage. So, what we're doing isn't so far out of line with that. So, there's been a motion and a second to read by title only.
Who—second? I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
Yeah, you did.
And no objection to that?
No objections.
Okay. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, adding Chapter 37 to Title 5 of the Emeryville Municipal Code, Minimum Wage Paid Sick Leave and Other Employment Standards, and adding Section 3-1.141 to Chapter 1 of Title 3 of the Emeryville Municipal Code, Business Taxes.
Move the ordinance. Second. Please call the roll.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Atkins.
Aye. Good to thank you all for coming out tonight and expressing your views. This takes us to 6.1, which is Public Hearing, which is about Design Guidelines. Good evening, Diana.
Good evening, councilmembers. Let's see. Okay. All right. So, here we are, talking about family-friendly design guidelines at last.
Chief, is there any way you can ask people to clear?
Could you move them down the stairs?
It's very difficult to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Intimidate—
That's not bad.
—perceives as we sit here. Ridiculous.
Okay. So, this is a proposed new section of the Emeryville Design Guidelines, plus some additions to the existing general residential section that applies to all residential development. So, what led up to this? The current design guidelines were adopted in 2010, and it has a residential section that includes one family-friendly design guideline. In 2011, we—the city hired MIG to do a report on what families need, and they found that part of what families need is family-friendly residential design. The next year, the Economic Development and Housing Division did a report on affordable housing—family—affordable family housing design, and they made a checklist out of that and used it in the Request for Proposals for the 3706 San Pablo Family Residential Affordable Project. And that worked so well that they proposed to put these ideas into the Emeryville Design Guidelines, so they can apply to all the units, including the market rate units. And the 2013 Planning Regulations include a bonus for family-friendly housing. So, there's been some review of the draft. We first brought it to the Planning Commission in 2013, and they sent us off to get some review by architects. So, we had two affordable family housing architects to comment on the draft pro bono, and we used their ideas. And as part of the housing element process, we had an Affordable Housing Developers Roundtable, and they said that a family-friendly design guidelines would be helpful to them. And we also hired a multifamily housing architect, Arnold Mamorella, who's here to answer any questions you might have, to comment on the guidelines and illustrate them, and he works mostly on market rate housing, so we have both points of view. We brought it back to the Planning Commission early this year, and they gave us some comments. We took it to the Housing Committee, and they gave us some comments. And we brought all that back to the Planning Commission in April, and they recommended approval with one additional provision about access from units to open space, which is one of the two things that's on the dais, and we'll talk about more about that later. And of course, you all recall the recent Joint City Council Planning Commission Study Session, wherein some of the council members and planning commissioners called for smaller communities centered around common open space within large projects. So, that's how we got to this—to hear what the process has been. So, what's in this thing? The residential section—the general residential section that applies to all residential development, we're proposing some new provisions. The ones about site and building design are: Let's put the mailboxes on the paths from the main pedestrian entry to the units, so people will have more social interaction. Provide community multipurpose room in projects with 30 or more units. Break up long corridors and define the entrances to the different apartments with lighting and articulation. Provide efficient access—this is from the Planning Commission—from units to the open space, and visual connections from the halls and stairs to exterior space. And in this same provision that section that applies to all residential development and unit design, as much as possible, let's have multiple exposures and shallow units and living areas on the exterior walls, so that they can get more light and air into the unit where—in the parts of the unit that are important. The glass should look onto exterior spaces, and there should be shading on the south and west. And transition spaces between units and open space. There should be kitchen ventilation, either cross ventilation through windows or a fan to the outside. Let's have closets and pantries for units with two or more bedrooms. Close stair risers. And show furniture in the plans for planning approvals, so that we can make sure that there's room for the furniture and circulation. Now, the new section—the family-friendly section, which currently only applies to bonus units, but may soon apply to all or some two and bedroom—three-bedroom units. The part about site and building design: Provide units with two, three, or more bedrooms. Provide a variety of unit types. You can mix multi-story and one-level units. Relate the units well to streets and open spaces, and there's a diagram about that. Put as many units as possible next to open space areas that are landscaped for play, gathering, and quiet respite. Provide ample play areas visible from homes with a variety of age-appropriate equipment and visible places where preteens and teens will want to gather. And this is from the May 2 meeting, the underlying part. In larger projects, such as over 100 units, divide the projects into smaller communities centered around common open space, where residents have exclusive access to their common and circulation areas. So, we added those words to the existing guideline in the draft. Family parking should be near halls and elevators, and a parking—if you have a parking lift, you should not have to back up one car out to get to the other car. Provide more bicycle parking than the code requires, with space for longer family bicycles and trailers. And the laundry—you can have in-unit laundry or a common laundry room or both. We prefer in-unit laundry for three or more bedroom units. Also, in this family-friendly section about unit design, the door to a unit should lead into a transition space, not directly into the middle of a room. Provide an indoor space for tricycles, strollers, outdoor toys, things like that. There should only be one master suite. Two master suites is great for roommates. Provide at least two full baths in three-bedroom units. Separate sleeping areas from living areas. In two-level units, they should be on separate floors, except where a den could serve as a bedroom. As I was going through the drawings yesterday, I realized that the drawings contradicted the text, so we added this text. Provide access from each bedroom to a bathroom without going through living areas. Provide a bathtub. And in two-level units, there should be at least a half-bath on the living floor. Dining and living areas should each have enough room for the furniture, seating for all the household members, and circulation. Provide windows to allow supervision of children outdoors. The hallways in the unit should be wide and well-lighted, so children can play in them. It doesn't say you have to have a hallway, but if you have one, it should be like this. Provide spaces that can change use as children grow—study, den, music, whatever. Provide soundproofing between the ceilings and floors, more than the building code requires. And design for infant and toddler safety, like, for instance, making sure that it's possible to put locks on the windows, so that children don't fall out. So, this is what Mr. Mamorella did. He gave us three drawings of units that are not family-friendly and seven drawings of units that are. The top-left unit has two master suites. The living area is small, and the residents would not put a dining table where it's shown, because it would block circulation. The entry is into the kitchen. There is no stroller storage. There's no flex space, and there's no balcony. The top-right unit, you have to go—if you're in the left bedroom, you have to go through the living room to get to the bathroom. The balcony is at a bedroom, which doesn't really help with the family space. The circulation looks better in this drawing, because they made the table small and stuck it in a corner. And other than the bedroom closets, there's no storage. In the lower unit, even though there are three bedrooms, the living area is still just as small as the others, especially the kitchen looks even smaller. So, those are—it was not easy for him to come up with bad examples, but he managed to do it. So, about the one-level family-friendly unit plans. All of these units have just one master suite. They have living areas with space for full-size furniture and circulation. They have direct access between the bedrooms and the bathrooms, and there's a foyer or other transition space at the entry, a place to put strollers and pantries. Example A has a balcony and a bay that increases light into the living room. Example B below is deeper, but increases light by placing the living area on the end with a partial corner. Example C increases—which is upright—upper right—increases the living area to go with the increase in bedrooms. And Example D has a big eat-in kitchen at the patio. And I'm sure there's more that you could say about these, but I won't. So, here are the two-level family-friendly units. In Example E, which is shown up and down to the left, a bay in the master bedroom provides a roof over a balcony off the dining room. Example F, upper right, the ground floor—you see a room that says G—that is a flex room. It looks like it's furnished as a study. It could be a den, could be different uses. This three-bedroom unit has an in-unit laundry. In both of those units, the bedrooms are all on a separate floor from the living areas. Example G has four bedrooms, and one of them could be used as a den, and it's on the first floor. So, it gives you some different options for these examples. So, let's look again at the two-three-bedroom flats that we've looked at before and just compare them. Actually, the desirable unit is fewer square feet, a little bit, but it has a lot more living area. The balcony is off the living area. The hallway is wider. There's a little sort of flex space next to the balcony that has lots of light, and the entry is into a foyer. So, those are illustrations of what we mean by family-friendly units. So, staff recommends adoption of the resolution and the attached revised new pages of the Emeryville Design Guidelines, and revised pages and new pages, the revised general residential section— section and the new family-friendly section. And replacing two of those pages with the two that are on the dais. Page 66, Guideline J46, dividing projects into smaller communities centered around common open space. And page 67, Guideline 53, bedrooms on a separate floor from the living area except where a den could serve as a bedroom. So that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Diana?
Or for Mr. Mamorella?
All right. Well, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing in case anybody wants to speak. John?
Hi, John Bowders, resident. I just had one comment. I wanted to appreciate the process for this and strongly supportive of these amended guidelines that are before you and ask you to adopt them. I just wanted to go on record, the language is, obviously, there's a guidelines and the language is helpful, but on J50 in particular speaks to in-unit laundry or common laundry areas, and it expresses a preference for in-unit laundry if there's three or more bedrooms. And I understand, being in a family that lived in a one-bedroom house with lots of kids, why there would be a preference for those things. I just want to provide one piece of context that in the, in the scope of doing affordable developments, there is a maximum square footage for a unit in order to get tax credits on that unit, and so developers in affordable complexes generally disfavor in-unit laundry for affordable developments because it eats up floor space and it ends up shrinking the sides of bedrooms and family spaces for those families. So just to keep that in mind. But we very much support this and hope that you'll adopt it. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I was just told by those wonderful small-business people that care so much about Emeryville that I had to leave my city hall, is what they just told me, out there in the foyer. That's kind of interesting. No, that's not going to happen. I'll leave my city hall when I want to leave, but I won't be told to leave my city hall, just so everybody knows. They said a lot of other choice things as well, a lot of sort of mixed language. Okay, I'd like to talk here for a second about J54. Separate sleeping areas from living areas. And you can see that's enumerated or is called out in the undesirable, first undesirable sketch. But what we want to make sure is what's understood here is that what they're, what you're talking about here with this provision is that bedrooms don't, doors to bedrooms are directly into living spaces. That's undesirable. So we want to make sure that that's very clearly spelled out here. And the reason is because you will have before you very soon a huge residential project, the marketplace development, and that development is chock-a-block with this undesirable characteristic. I'm telling you right now because I've seen the, the unit plans, the floor plans, and virtually every single one, with the exception of the townhouses at that development proposal is the, would be called undesirable. It has bedrooms right off of the live spaces. So it sort of behooves you to really make sure that you make that really clear, and it's sort of not 100% clear it's here. And I think you should talk, spend a little bit of time talking about that because we're going to be running into a problem right, right off with the developers of the marketplace development and with their project. Their project is, like I said, is, could never be passed if you adopt these guidelines. You'll have to say no to them, and you, you better make sure that's, you know, it's very clear, and that's, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you very much.
Then add a direct order to the council?
Hang on a sec. Is there any other public comment? All right. Public comment on the public hearing is closed. Council discussion?
Move the resolution.
Did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I think John Bowder's comment about the in-unit laundry is a very applicable one because we are concerned with affordable housing. And are you, John, come up here and let us know if you suggest any change to that wording that would help us with the, clearly delineate that there's an option on affordable housing to, to not have the in-
J50?
Thanks for the question. I think, I mean, these are guidelines, so they're not, they don't, they just guide the, the-
Right.
-planning director when he works with an applicant for a development. I don't have a specific proposal for change in mind. I think you, I mean, if you were to make any changes, it may not be appropriate to put it in this provision. And it may actually, Charlie will probably know, it may actually be elsewhere in the planning guidelines that, that a developer is to consider other factors that may constrain or, or limit the applicability of other guidelines. So something that, because-
See that, Charlie?
I don't know if you do that.
The way J50 is written, it says, "Provide ample in-unit or common laundry areas," so there's a choice written into that.
It's the last sentence in that section that I'm looking at.
We went around and around on this. Originally, the guidelines, actually, the planning regulations in the development bonus system, where we have the development bonus for family-friendly units explicitly says they must have in-unit laundries. And after talking to various affordable housing developers and market rate developers, I mean, architects, the ones that Diana mentioned, and, and I'm not sure if she included this in her presentation, but the Planning Commission also did a bus tour of some affordable family-friendly projects in Oakland and Berkeley. And it was a mix between laundries in the units versus common laundries. I think a lot of people, developers and architects and residents prefer common laundries because it allows them a place where they can gather and get together with their neighbors rather than just staying in their units to do their laundry. I think the idea was that in a three-bedroom unit, you're gonna, more likely to have a large family with mom or dad, you know, juggling a bunch of kids and trying to do the laundry at the same time, and it'd be more conducive for their family to probably have the laundry right there than to have to schlep off to some other part of the project. But it's not, as Mr. Bowder says, it's a guideline. It's not a requirement. So they can all be reviewed on a case-by-case basis.
But your point is well-taken, John.
Thank you.
I'd move the resolution.
I second.
All right. It's a public hearing. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Asher?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
And Mayor Atkins?
Aye. This takes us to 7.1, which is pertaining to the RFP for the, to continue the poet laureate program. And tonight, what's before us is the RFP panel, and I'd like to nominate Sarah Kapinski, Joyce Jenkins, and Rick Tahade Flores to serve-
Second.
Mayor Atkins? May, I don't know if you want to do this separately, but may I note there's also proposals for two alternates?
True.
Do you want to include those in your motion?
Yes, I include the, in my motion, I include the suggested alternates.
Public comment?
Just for the record, that's Kaya Oakes as the outside literary arts professional and Sharon Wilshire as the community representative alternate.
Thank you. You found it faster than I did.
I already had it up.
Move the resolution.
Comments?
Is there, it was seconded, right? Okay, public comment?
I'm sorry, I just, the reason why I called out is because it seemed like you were going to skip that. I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, once again, reiterate what I said earlier to Councilmember Davis. When you see a crime or even hear about a crime, you should call the police. That's the remedy. That's, that's what we do here. And I want to thank Member Davis for resisting what might have been a temptation to commit a crime here tonight, which would have been to have slandered somebody like other people did. You didn't do that, so good on you for that. It's good not, for the council members not, you shouldn't be slandering people, and you didn't do it, so that's good. Thank you for, for not slandering anybody. However-
Did you want to speak on the agenda item?
Yeah. Well, this is, this is, I'm talking about the-
This is the poet laureate. You haven't said anything about that.
That's right. This is poetry right now.
It's not on the agenda item.
It's not on the agenda.
It's poetically connected to the agenda item.
No, it isn't.
No?
No.
I don't see anything here about, about this agenda item.
Okay, how do you, how do you stop somebody speaking from what you consider not to be on the agenda item?
Because you haven't said anything about the selection of the RFP panel or anything like that.
Well, in your opinion, but how do you, how do you know? How do you stop somebody from?
Because I've heard what you've said.
Okay, so what's the mechanism?
Brian, you are out of order.
No, what's the mechanism?
You are out of order.
Are you going to have me arrested for talking off the subject?
No, I'm going to have you step away so we can conduct our business here.
It's my time to speak. Public comments?
On this agenda item.
I believe it's on this agenda item. And you say no?
It hasn't been so far.
Well, okay, I disagree. You want to, is the clock, you want to start the clock back up? Please stop interrupting me, Mayor.
No, I want you to talk on point.
I am talking on point.
You haven't yet.
In my opinion, I am.
It's not commonly understood to have the same meaning as you-
I believe it is. I believe, I believe I'm talking on the issue.
I'd like to get, get some guidance here from, from our legal department. He's out of order because he isn't talking on, about the agenda, on the agenda item.
The concept is, is that you're to speak to the item that's on the agenda?
Right. You've said nothing about the, our poet laureate program.
Yes, I had, I was speaking about that.
No, you weren't. You're talking to, to Councilmember Davis.
When public, people, people on, people speak on public comments, you can use all manner of speaking. You can use silence. You can use meter. You can use inflection. You can use all manner-
You're not talking about our item of business.
I am talking about the item of business, and all manner-
You care to speak about our selection panel.
I am speaking about that.
Then please do. Please go forward.
Continue.
Please.
Thank you. Once again, if a crime is being, is being committed, if you hear of somebody committing-
We're not talking about crimes. We're talking about the poet laureate program.
Would you please stop interrupting me? I'm trying to, I'm trying to finish my, my three minutes. Would you please let me speak?
No, because you haven't said anything about the poet laureate program. You're out of order, Brian.
No, I'm not. No, I'm speaking on, you're, you're trying to stop me from speaking. I'm speaking on the item.
You're talking about crimes. You're not talking about the poet laureate program.
That's what you think, and I say no. I say you're wrong. I'm speaking about the item on the agenda. I'm speaking on the item, whatever the number is, the poet laureate, yes.
Yeah, say, say something about the poet laureate program.
I am. I'm speaking about that.
You know, you're talking about crimes being committed.
Mr. Biddle, what, how does this get resolved? I say I'm speaking on the agenda item. How does this get resolved?
Your time's up.
No, I got, no, I was interrupted by the, by the mayor. How does, how does this result? Who's, who's the content police here?
This is ridiculous.
I mean, so when the, the mayor thinks that somebody's speaking off the topic, the gavel gets dropped, and then the handcuffs go on? So that's mighty convenient. Is that how we're going to do it here? How are we going to do it here?
The presiding officer-
So if you don't like what somebody's saying, you can, you can bang the gavel, and then that gentleman comes up and puts the handcuffs on? Is that what happens?
Out of control. Either close the meeting-
I'm in control.
Move the agenda.
All right. I'm going to adjourn this meeting because we can't conduct our business.
Do we have a, we have a motion and a second on the-
Call the question.
Yeah, I call the question.
Sorry, who's the motion and second?
Does the public comment-
Here's the motion.
I second it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. There's no city's housing successor items, communications, and reports, department heads?
I would just like to let you know that the, the money from our lawsuit, the 16.5 million, is in the city's bank account.
All right. A vote. Any other department heads? Well, well done, Mike. Councilmembers, I'll, I'll just say that I've been going on the public media circuit around our minimum wage ordinance, and national media's been contacting me. So I've had a couple of media appearances and a third one maybe next week about that. So we're, we're catching some national attention for-
Also catching heat at home.
Do you want to discuss 9.2.1? Yes. 9.2.1. It's a letter of support for AB 1056. Wait, let me pull up the item. Took me a while to get there. Hang a sec.
Over on my, my work.
So this is a letter of support for Speaker Atkins' AB 1056 Second Chance Program. And any comments? Public comment? Yeah. John?
Just very briefly, the organization I work for is working very closely with the speaker on this bill. Prop 47, recategorize six offenses from felonies or wobblers to misdemeanors, and the state savings from those, those changes moved people from going to prison to county jail. Counties assume the responsibility for that, but the Department of Finance is required to calculate state savings realized from that and reinvest that in local communities. That is going to be, that money's going to be handed over to the Board of State and Community Corrections, and this bill layers into services that will provide mental health, drug treatment and diversion program services at the local level, housing, job training, and wraparound supportive care. So we would really strongly ask you to support this bill.
All right. So-
Go for it.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it forward. All right. So that's by acclamation, there's, that support letter will be signed and forwarded to the state. And councilmembers, any other councilmembers?
Oh, I, I, so I am a member of Stop Waste, which is our waste management authority and recycling board and energy council for Alameda County. And one thing that's going to be coming before Stop Waste again is a possible expansion of our plastic bag ban in Alameda County. So in 2012, Stop Waste initiated a ban for, I believe it was 1,300 stores. Maurice may have the numbers memorized, burned in his brain from all the, the plastic bags picked out of storm drains by hand or stick. But we will be approaching this issue again and looking at the success of the program and the success of programs in other regional areas where they have been more stringent, such as San Jose, to see if it would serve us well to expand the ban. So as I said, I believe it was 1,300 retail stores that were affected by the ban in the first place, and I think we're considering expanding the ban to 7,000 stores excluding restaurants. So at that time, if that comes before Stop Waste, I'd like to bring it back before council and if anyone has any-
I just have a comment. Some of our own stores are still not in compliance, so I'm not sure about the enforcement.
Well, there is complaint-based enforcement, so if you want to let me know.
Okay. I complained after, a month after the, that passed, and then, but there hasn't been a change.
Okay, well, there has been a change, and you can ask Maurice and the amount of-
This is a store of shame.
Oh, yeah. I'll do that offline.
Actually, I'd love to ask Maurice if you, if you personally have any knowledge of, here in, in Emeryville, of any changes. I know that I, I've participated in shoreline cleanups with people in this very room, and that small, tiny pieces of plastic are something I now hate with a vengeance because the, the bags break up into tiny, tiny pieces and get eaten by wildlife.
I am aware of the proposed changes. Of course, Emeryville and the rest of the county were leaders in the region, and now we've fallen behind because everybody else is a lot more stringent. So I'm aware of these changes, and I believe that it's been a positive result in Emeryville because we, you know, as we're picking up trash, we're seeing a lot less plastic, so.
Okay, I could report something. I'm sorry to end the meeting on a mosquito note.
Oh, it's so itchy.
But the, the tiger mosquito has made it to Alameda County. This is the, the one that I was saying was bringing potentially diseases we haven't had here before, including traditional diseases like yellow fever. And so we're just going to have to recognize our climate's warming up. This mosquito has come up from Southern California. It's in Alameda County. And to, in order for the diseases to start, we have to have people already infected, so we'll have some delay in that. And just think about your screens and consider using DEET. And it's, it's a reality, I'm sorry to say.
I'm so glad you represent us on that board.
And I'm sorry to have to tell you the bad news.
Thank you.
We look forward to your report.
Now, now that the room is mostly empty, before, before I adjourn it, you know, there, we were asked by different sectors of the community tonight to speak out against disruption- we were asked by different sectors of the community tonight to speak out against disruptive and obnoxious and bullying and harassing behavior. It might not be illegal, but it sure isn't good behavior and something that I, I don't condone. And the, the bloggers in town have been at war with each other recently and I want to acknowledge that as, as well. That's not, unlike some of the discussion that we've had here tonight, going to a lowest common denominator is not the best of, of public participation or, or civic discourse. So I am very disheartened when obnoxious behavior happens in town. And it may not be illegal and First Amendment rights allow people to behave poorly in, in public comment section of, of our meetings. But to go to private individuals offline outside of the council chambers and, and be bullying and harassing, while it might not be illegal, it's certainly not desirable and not something that I condone or support in any way. And I just, I just wanted to say that now that some of the tempers in the room have left, to put that out in the, in public comp, in the, on the public record. So with that, again, I want to remember Jeremy Hamm and this meeting is adjourned.